Yeah.
Moose tracks?
Yeah. Moose trash?
Tracks.
This is.
Mr. Chairman, you're all set.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, December 15th, 2021 meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 20. That order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, by action of legislature, the order was extended until April 21st, 2022. This meeting is a Zoom meeting as well as being held in person. I'm going to call the role. Commissioner Stady.
I'm present.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Shea is here. We have a quorum. I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good afternoon to everyone. We have a regular full agenda today followed by a meeting of the Norfolk County Agricultural Board Trustees. And it's 6:00 PM today, but some of us are going to be attending a meeting of the full advisory board of all the cities and towns. Number three minutes of the open session meeting of December 8th, 2021. We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I had just one note on this on page six when I was reviewing them.
Sure.
If I could maybe add, I'll get to it. It quotes Commissioner Stady myself. He said that registrar Donald may have stretched, didn't say what. I think I had said stretch the facts. I'd like to insert that. So I'd move.
What paragraph is that?
Go down, Mr. Chairman, to the fourth paragraph.
Commissioner stated that other departments had concerns with the recommendations. He stated original Donald may have stretched. Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
You said.
Yeah, just like to just insert.
Again, give me the verbiage.
So I'd like to add in the words, stretch the facts. Two words.
Okay. Any other questions about the minutes of last week's full meeting of December 8th? Motion as amended.
So moved. Yeah. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Well, here's the vote. Public comment. Each week we make a session here for public comment. Director Cronin, have you heard from anyone about public comment?
I have not, sir.
Anyone in our Zoom audience that wants to comment? Last fall. Thank you. Numbers five is appointments. We have none today. Number six, under old business. We do have some old business. Last week, we accepted the second supplemental appropriation to be forwarded to the advisory board. Director Cronin has revised submitted to the advisory board. I'm going to ask him to outline it. It's in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated last week, the commissioners approved of the proposed second supplemental appropriation. We're operating in capital needs with the county. That evening, we had a meeting with the finance committee to go over a variety of content. The meeting that was held last week also with the commissioners prior to the finance committee meeting included spirited dialogue with the registry deeds regarding the information technology component of the Abraham's Group report. It was apparent from that conversation that the commissioners had an interest in exploring the technology element of this proposal with more detail. So the finance committee and I had a conversation about potentially funding a technology study to examine the registry and county operations in more detail. The finance committee seemed inclined to support the request, but they recognized that it had not been part of the original approved second supplemental earlier that day. So they requested that I revisit the second supplemental with the commissioners this week to vote in this proposal. With your approval, Mr. Chairman, I'll briefly read the justification for it. In your packet, it can be found on page three of my memo to you under technology. This item would be to appropriate from surplus up to $50,000 to conduct a technology assessment of the registry of deeds in Norfolk County technology infrastructure excluding the Norfolk County Agricultural High School. The set assessment will make recommendations to the county commissioners on the state of all hardware, software, staffing, and security status of all systems. It shall make recommendations on any staffing consolidation, including staffing changes and assessment of efficient fee collections of all sources to the county commissioners. Set assessment shall be concluded by May 1st, 2022, so as to make recommendations relevant for the FY23 budget considerations. In addition.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Yes, sir. Okay. In addition to that particular item, we have received information relative to a project at the Wallston Golf Course. That project has seen a projected savings associated with it. I had originally proposed $65,000 for the staircase on the 15th hole. This week, we were notified that there is apparently a $15,000 savings. So I'm proposing to move that apportionment of funding to the request for legal services going from $30,000 to $45,000. So effectively, I'm moving the savings from the 15th hole. Did you find those on?
Page two.
Page two.
That's correct.
There's also commissioner summary sheet here. This might be helpful too. You can see the item on here. So the second I'm simply moving what was apparently a cost savings on the 15th hole over to legal services. So those are the changes that were made from the second supplemental that you folks looked at last week. So I'll be looking for the commissioners to read both this and I'll present it to the seating to the advisory board and finance committee as they meet the seating.
Questions, commissioners, please.
A couple, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So, well done, as always, John. But question, so am I reading this right? Technology, the total amount we'd be looking would be upwards around 66,000? If we take those surpluses and the other amount, we're looking in the vicinity of 65,000? Would you think it's really realistic that, I was looking at something lower, but I mean, is that industry standard? Is that something you?
The breadth of this particular valuation will require some specialties as I've examined it. I've spoken to a couple of different sources in my industry. Coupled with the relatively quick turnaround time that the county's requesting, we're going to need a report principally within about five months, Commissioner. So that will drive up some of the projected costs. And it's important to note that in this conversation, this part of the conversation was also very vibrant with the finance committee. No one, including myself, are in a heart to do more studies. We feel like there's a certain level of benefit. However, it was clear that the technology issue, which the Abraham's Group brought forth, seems to require more technical study for the benefit of the county. This particular item, according to the finance committee, should not exceed 50. So they were comfortable with up to. So we'll competitively bid it. We will post it.
Okay.
We'll ask for bids and it could very well be less.
Okay, good.
Report back on what that funding yields.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. You answered my question. Second question for the chair. What's our difference then in our supplemental request? What's the difference in what are we actually moving tonight, this afternoon?
From last week?
Yeah.
It's an additional $50,000.
Okay, so the figure we'd be asking for approval would be 42750? Or 39568? What are we looking for to approve today?
If I may, I'll yield to these forms, which Phil Iantosca has always provided for us. So the motions will be found on the bottom of the operating and the capital pages. And I believe the total is somewhere around 579.
Okay. So 298 and 286?
That is correct.
Okay, got it. Got it. Okay. I'm offset, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins, you have any questions?
No questions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Another study. I get nervous, but committed to it. Came up last week. I'm worried. I'm going to draw your attention to the memo we got this morning. You'll all have a copy from the registered date of December 14th. Based on last week's meeting, it touches on a couple of points. Well, there's a more details. We're looking to further explore technology. I'm all for it, but I get nervous. Beauty's in the eye of the beholder here. I'm willing to do anything to bring this to a head. What is, I have an issue with May 1st. I know it takes months, weeks, months, things slip. We've got some commitments here. We've got statutory commitments about passing next year's budget. Are we going to be sitting here in May and be jammed up because we don't have the study? Do you feel? Number one. And number two, I mean, the treasurer's here, he knows, well, he's done a little studying on his own. I'm not studied out at all. And I open my big mouth and say, I'll do anything to resolve this. So I will. But it's another 50,000 after the 75,000. That, again, beauty's in the eye of the beholder and everyone gets attacked and everything. How do you, what is your feeling about what kinds of companies, background, et cetera, do they, before they get attacked after we, they don't say what we want them to say? And I have no idea what they're going to say.
No, excellent questions, Commissioner. First of all, it appears is that the Abraham's Group and its breadth and depth has touched upon a number of different areas in county government that have not been fully reviewed or analyzed in many, many years. I can analogize this item to the school tuition matter, which, as you, as you know, is, is become, has come before the trustees as an issue that needs further discussion.
Agenda today.
I understand. So the Abraham's Group called out the structural issues with the school's budget, and it was determined back in November that further information is needed in order to make a valid or, you know, an informed decision. And so the commissioners saw a fit to fund a study, a tuition study last week. This is akin to that. I think the conversation last week was very honest. It was open and it expressed a lot of thoughts involving, I think you put it, layman's understanding of the technological challenges that lie ahead for this study, excuse me, for this consolidation if it were to occur. This particular option is similar to the schools and it gives you an opportunity to have a closer, deeper look at the impact of that decision. And I feel quite confident that we'll be able to achieve some deliverable by May 1st. We will be likely soliciting feedback from vendors on state contract. And I've spoken to a number of different sources at the state to find out firms that do this kind of work, and they do it all the time. So I'm quite confident we'll find a competitive market for, for this kind of work. And the contract will hold them accountable for a deliverable by May 1st.
If I could, I share these same concerns with the chair. I do. When I suggested the idea of a study, I didn't anticipate it to be upwards of 50,000 to 60,000 to $70,000. Because on top of the consulting we already paid, you do get the feeling, how many studies can you have?
That's right.
I'd like to see a cap perhaps at a lower amount, if we could try that, but then that might delay the bidding. But I'd also like to see if we can include, if we could.
About the time the deliverables.
We could get included in this, again, information on other counties that we never got from the Abraham report, either from our consultant that we paid for or from this company to, for a comparison. It would help us to compare, to see, okay, in different counties, here's how it operates. And then give us your recommendation as well. I would appreciate that. Because that, to me, was a missing piece of the puzzle. But, I mean, hopefully we won't have more studies.
Before I. I share your, I share your concerns. I'm the same.
I think it's, I think it's a reasonable, if the, if the finance committee was supportive, and I think.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I'm going to vote for this.
Yeah.
I just.
I think it's just, you know, we want to.
Another set of eyes, use my turn, but let's go.
Right.
I got my fingers crossed. Yes, Commissioner Collins.
So for clarification, so I heard you say a study up to 50 grand. I got that. And then Commissioner Stady set up to 65 grand. I think it's 50, right?
He was summing up the other items in technology, which included replacing two new Dell servers, increasing the increased cost coverage.
So this, so this study is only 50?
Study's 50, right.
Yeah, okay.
But technology's looking for like about 65,000?
Okay, that's what the.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
All right. Okay. Any other discussion? Anyone want to weigh in on this? Again, this is timely because it's going to go in tonight to the advisory board. But based on last week's meeting, you feel there's an appetite to do this.
There was.
Okay. I have no further questions.
So you need two motions, Mr. Chairman? All right. So I'd be happy to move the first one, the, for the fiscal 22, second supplemental appropriation for operating, I'd move the total sum of 266,480.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
In the second motion, Mr. Chairman, I move the fiscal 22 second supplemental appropriation for capital, the amount of 298,749.09.
Second.
So moved.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Do you need any more? Do you need a specific motion about the 50 grand?
I don't. I.
Because you already voted that in, we already just voted that in the numbers, but I don't know if you want a specific on that.
No, is, if there's a consensus on the scope of what I've drafted, then I'll use this as sort of a jumping off point when we, when we post. Commissioner Stady brought in perhaps another element to include comparative technological assessment to other county business. If there's a sense that his, his interest is supported, I think I would like that.
I'd like it too. I just, I don't know what kind of response we're going to get because the county didn't help us out before. The other county.
That's correct. That, that, that's exactly right.
So I, so I'm fine with it and hopefully it comes through, but I wouldn't be surprised if it didn't.
So basically comparative analysis of our county technological operations to other functional county operations.
Right. Okay. In particular, ones that were more carefully associated with possible Plymouth, Bristol, right, that we could.
So if we can. I, I would, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I, I would entertain a vote to expand the scope to include what Commissioner Stady just mentioned, and I'll see to it that that's put.
So you want to revote this with that verbiage?
The vote, the vote's fine. It doesn't change the value. It just changes the scope. Because Commissioner Stady adds in the comparative analysis. That's all. If you all agree, that's all.
Yes.
We do.
Yes, yes.
We all agree.
I can't speak.
Do you need that in terms of a motion or not?
I would like one.
All right.
Go ahead, Dick.
I missed a thing. I'll put it away. I'll move that the scope of services for the IT department be noted as prepared by our director and with the additional inclusion that a comparison of other relevant counties be included as well, how the end of IT, others take words to that effect. Fair enough?
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we close this matter, I refer it to the letter we received today, dated December 14th, from the register by hand. And it's, it's somewhat talks to the, the subject. And I want to make that part of the record and supply that to all interested parties. And I haven't completely digested it, but it's in your packet, of course.
I got that letter actually.
Didn't get it last night.
Mr. Chairman, I, I read that. It seemed to me, at least it to me appeared at first as a spirit of, we're going to cooperate with us.
I noticed that. There's no question about.
Which was good. It was, it was good to see perhaps a movement in a positive way from the registrar. And he indicated that he was willing to meet with us separately, collectively in some way to kind of work this out. So I was encouraged by that. It was, you know, a good thing, maybe in the spirit of the season.
Okay. Just bringing to our attention, again, I did, I read it 802 this morning.
There you go.
Number seven, personal matters for consideration. Three at the agricultural school and one, I'm sorry, four at the agricultural school.
All right, the agricultural school, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, note the following. I move notice of resignation of Ann Ambiel of Boston as a substitute instructor effective December 9th, 21. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Notice of resignation of Kimberly Piant of Middleborough, Mass. as a substitute instructor effective December 9th, 21.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number three.
Notice of change of address for Richard Fitzpatrick to Quincy effective December 9th, 21.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Goodbye, Rick.
And we're happy to.
Next one.
Last one, notice of appointment of Robin J. Van Rutz of North Providence, Rhode Island, as the principal at the Aggie School effective January 3rd, 22, replacing Ronald Driscoll. So moved.
Second, I'd like to, I'd like to say how nice it is to have an alumni at the Aggie as a.
I was just going to ask, but she's a graduate of the Aggie, our Aggie, right?
Bristol.
Bristol.
I thought she was.
I was going to, I was going to ask for that clarification.
Oh, we'll take her anyway.
We won't hold it against her. Any other comments about appointment of a new principal at the agricultural high school? Superintendent has appointed Robert J. Van Rutz of North Providence.
We wish her well. And you got a new team now, a whole new team together.
It has been, it's been a little bit of a ride, but we're making progress.
There you go.
I certainly want to comment on that because in, in, in six months or less, to have a new superintendent.
Yeah.
A new business manager. A new principal. It's, it, you know, it's a lot, but.
They can.
To say nothing of the day to day, ongoing business of the, running the agricultural school. So our fingers are crossed. We have another meeting today. We have big issues always there and, you know, we're going to work with everyone.
So you're competing with Phil Belichick for executive of the year?
Okay.
He'll nominate me.
Okay, motion made in seconded. Accept the appointment of Robin Van Rutz as principal of Aggie School. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number eight, payroll and expense warrants.
Right, Mr. Chairman, we have four to take care of this afternoon. First, I'll move the payroll of the county, 22-24, the amount of 147,189.17. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next, Mr. Chairman, move the payroll of the school, 22-24, parentheses 12, the amount of 382,977.51.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Third, the expense for the county, 12-0322, the amount of 275,038.21.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And lastly, expense for the school, 22-06, the amount of 271,433.36.
Motion made in second. All in favor? It is a vote.
That takes care of.
Number nine, ARPA warrants for approval. Town of Bellingham. Right. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the Town of Bellingham had prepared a, an application which was nearly complete. We placed this on your agenda hoping that it would be ready for your signature. It is not. I had some questions about the project. I sent over an email and received a response this morning, which was satisfactory. So I will have it prepared for the warrant for next week.
Okay, great.
Can we take the vote next week?
That's correct. I do want to inform you, the, the portal that is receiving applications is not, I'm not getting overwhelmed, but I am getting a steady interest. I believe we're up to over a dozen applications. Many of them are pending at various stages right now as communities begin to pivot into their strategies for what they're looking for. I'm encouraged by some of the projects we're seeing. They're very creative, innovative, and so far exciting. So we're getting great feedback from the communities who are engaged in the process. I actually heard from a community outside Norfolk County that they were so impressed with the work done by Clifton Larson. They hired Clifton Larson to be their own auditor. So we're in good shape. I hope to have at least one for you next week, others if they reach level three for approval.
Great.
Without tuning our horn, is this number four or five?
It would be the North Community.
Yes, North Community. Okay. Groove Dover, Wellesley, and.
And two are in Wellesley.
And two were.
Let me ask you this without tuning our horn. Do, 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 do. Other counties have awarded any money yet?
I'm, I'm not aware. I, I am aware that Plymouth has received a request in their portal. Bristol has not launched their portal yet. They are in active mode because I think they just hired an ARPA coordinator. So that kind of delayed where they were in the space, but they are, they'll play catch up. But one of the things in, Bill, and I'll talk about this in a minute, we're hearing from, you know, our contacts in cities and towns, is a lot of cities and towns are, they're comfortable knowing we have this program. They feel fully informed, but they're all waiting. They, they are strategizing on how to use their resources from the ARPA program, coupled with the new federal money as well as their own resources. And I'll get into some of that in a minute, but.
And the state ARPA, which is just coming down too.
That's right.
So you've got these different factors that are all coming at us. And that's, that's why they're waiting. They're, they're all, they want to get to it.
Plenty of time, you know, they're, you're absolutely right, Commissioner. It's time to get this done. And, but the projects we've seen so far, including Wellesley, couldn't we? I mean, they, they are in an urgent get it done phase, but we're in good shape. We are far and away the most active county using the portal and getting on mic.
I did see fellow Commissioner Greg Hanley last evening. And we were, I mean, I know that we're ahead of them in terms of getting out things.
I, I spoke to him last Wednesday. I made it know.
We didn't make any kind of better wager, but he assured me they'll be catching up soon. All right.
Good. I mean, I'm only, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, the treasurer's here, he knows, and he's a part of the team. And again, I go back six months when I was worried about the nominee, et cetera, the newness. And, you know, I don't feel that way anymore. And it's a credit to everyone. That's all.
And ju- just for clarification, I know we teased Plymouth and Bristol, but they are integral to this whole process, especially, especially Plymouth. They did a great job.
Yeah. I always kid about Plymouth, but there's no question about it. I call it the only plan anyway. Okay. Thank you. Number 10. PARAC agreement for fiscal year 2022. This is a yearly occurrence, I believe.
It is.
Okay. John, can you explain it? In your packet, folks?
Yes, this MOU between Executive Office of FANF, the Norfolk County Retirement System, the Public Employee Retirement Commission, known as PARAC, and of course, Norfolk County Treasurer and Norfolk County Commissioners, is an annual agreement that sets forth the amortization payment schedule for all the benefits associated with public employee retirement. This agreement seeks your endorsement today. Copy's in your packet.
Any questions about this? We have the treasurer, who's also the chairman of our retirement board with us. And again, it says, I do remember doing this the other last couple of years. It's in proper order and ready to go.
What is, what's this basically, something we do every year?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we, dressing it for you.
Yeah. I have to redo it quick because I'm not exactly sure what memo it is. Chairman, can I see it?
You signed it last week.
Looks like you deal with the deeds.
Yeah, yeah. In terms of, I think it's routine. In terms of we do the deeds every year.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know the cities and towns do it too, but I do remember having it done here too. Since I'm in here. Okay, well, we don't want to.
Need a motion on that right there.
We want to keep in, in, in line with the PARAC rules and regulations. Of course, we have a good relationship.
So moved that the board would execute the agreement dealing with the retirement board, the commission, the treasurer, and so on, as outlined in the agreement, dated this date.
Second.
Motion made in seconded relative to the fiscal year 22 PARAC agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is.
You want that executed on a certain copy? There's a.
Which one of them's the original?
That's a great question. I was wondering. Joe D is on the call. Joe, can I ask if it matters if the wet signatures are all on one page, or can the commissioners endorse a copy of signatures?
I believe the signatures need to be all on one page for the copy that's going back to Department of Revenue.
Okay.
Want me to start it?
Yes, if you could.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
You're welcome. And just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, this is to get the extra deeds excise money from the registry for the GL retirees' pension cost.
Well, we have to take care of the retirees and no question about that.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, well, we're signing the PARAC documents. I'm going to move to number 11 in your packet, November trial balances for. How the November trial balances work. Ask the director.
Um, the, the. Um, the, the trial balances look, um, generally fine. There are a couple of areas, um, that I've had conversations with staff about. Our Assistant Treasurer, Joe Doria, also, and I, the, uh, the county's, um, health insurance funds balance is, I believe funded below the projected cost for FY '22. Um, this was known a couple of months ago, so what we're going to do is keep an eye on those costs. But in all likelihood, this will be a final supplemental item to clear out our obligations for FY '22. So it's a looming deficiency. Um, and it's just something we're going to keep an eye on. It's, it's underfunded right now, but, uh, funding it now would be more of a guess. So we'll clean it up towards the final quarter of fiscal year 22.
And that trial balance reflects also APRA, uh, amount in there.
I noticed because it's up, it's got to, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good point.
Go to the second page, uh, bottom where it lists the state and federal grants, you'll see $68 million, which is the 50% tranche that we have been allocated by the federal government for ARPA.
What for you, Mr. Chairman, to the treasurer? Um, when do we anticipate getting a second payment? We were told it was going to be coming in before the end of the year, but that was before. The second payment on APRA.
On the APRA, John, what have they told you?
Oh, June of next year. Okay. Just wondering. I'm fine.
Give or take.
Yeah. Well, we gotta watch what happens, you know? I want to give it as soon as we're gonna get it, as long, as quick as we can, you know? Uh, I'll move the approval of the trial balance for the 11/30/21 period to be the total amount of $85,431,871.13.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the November trial balance. Uh, again, November 9th, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Day of November 3rd. Thank you. It is a vote. Number 12, request for engineering services in the Town of Canton. In your packet, you'll see a memo from the Town of Canton from Charlie Aspen-Walltown Administrator, request for survey services. And the back, the request in the background is in this packet. I have, uh, we have Patrick, uh, Town Surveyor online with us. He is the principal person. He does know about this, of course. Um, but I turn it to him just for a brief explanation. And if we're required to vote today, I think there's no reason that we can't go forward, but what, whatever, uh, whatever fact that recommends. So Patrick, just in 10 words or less, explain this to us. It's on York Street. We're all familiar with York Street.
Yes, we are.
Very historic, nice street. Go ahead, Patrick.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, basically, I talked to Jason Mello, the town engineer. They need us to perform a topographic base map for them to design the new drain line that's in, uh, going to be in a drain easement. And then when they're done construction, we, uh, just lay out the limits of the easement for, for construction as well, so they stay inside of it. And we can definitely do the work. Happy to do it.
Any questions? Again, listen, going on and going.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I did get a call from both the town administrator and one of the members of the select board saying that this was kind of a high priority item. Patrick, kind of if you can hear me, but whatever you can do to expedite would be greatly appreciated.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
That's good. I, I may just point to the, the actual easement goes back to May and we already, you know, it's an ongoing thing, so.
Right, right. Been gone for a while. Yep.
All right, well, we certainly want to work with the Town of Canton on this and that's what our engineering department does and they do it well, so. No other questions, we can go forward, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Patrick, you don't have any other comments, right?
Is it gone?
No further comments, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you.
Okay, that completes that matter in the Town of Canton. One theory, we have no bid openings. Quarter two, no contract awards, none. Number 15, discussion of Abraham's group recommendation for Commissioner's Office, Regional Services, and Human Services. We're going to have these folks come in.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Michelle is here.
Yeah.
Robert's on the call and, uh, and the Commissioner's Office is here. Michelle, go to Michelle first if you have no reaction.
Yeah, I was just going to point that out, Mr. Chairman. The, um, the county administrative pieces that are noted in the agenda, including human resources, regional services, and overall administration are prepared to provide the Commissioner's feedback and the Abraham's Group report tonight. So there'll be three speakers. We'll have Michelle come first, then Bill Buckley and myself, so it's okay.
Great.
Okay, this is the sixth week that we've had various departments.
In the final.
It's an ongoing process to help us digest all this.
And this will conclude it all too, right? Yes, eh?
Certainly won't conclude it all.
Not concluded, but I mean, the first part, yeah, good.
All right. Michelle.
Um, so I just want to let you know that I read through that, um, human resources portion of, of the report and I submitted responses to each of you. To sum everything up, I concur with the findings in this report. Um, the county, county works with the administrative assistants in each department to assist with the county paperwork for the human resources department. It's one thing that they talk about a lot in their report is the EPAR portal that is part of Infinite Visions. And that portal currently we do not have access to, so I can't speak to that portal directly. But what I can speak to is the fact that it will assist in the whole process of a position opening up. Currently, you get a blue paper when, um, the position has already been filled. The EPAR will open a position when, um, a, a department is looking to fill a vacated position. And that will open up the, the position to begin with. Then once the person is hired and all the paperwork and the background and everything's completed, then the blue paper will be generated. So the EPARs are electronic. So what happens is the departments, the administrative assistants in the department will, um, open up an EPAR. It will get routed to the manager in that department and then whoever needs to sign off on it, whether it be all the way up to the department head or if it's a lower level, um, sign off, once it's signed off, it comes to HR, the same thing. We have an employee portal that's also purchased with this new, um, upgrade. And the employee port, portal right now, if someone changes their address, a blue paper is filled out by the administrative assistant. It's sent over to human resources. It's, um, it is presented to you on the agenda for approval. When it's approved, copies are made, sent to each department. And the upgraded portal, the employee will actually go into the portal, log in, update their address. It will go, it will just route itself right to the, um, next person. And it will get routed, once it's approved by the person in the department, it will get routed right to HR and payroll. So you can see that the manual process and that step is going to be completely eliminated. And so that's what I want to talk about, is talk, talk about the, um, this new, um, portal that we're getting from Infinite Visions and the E, and the, um, SaaS portal that they talk about, which is, has the employee portal, which we are working, we, we will train and put, um, um, procedures, you know, together for all the employees. Once I am able to try the system out and test it, then we'll, we'll, we'll roll it out to all the employees in the departments. But right now, we're not at that stage. Does anyone have any questions?
About your whole report?
Yes.
I do have a question, but you haven't gone through, are you going right down the line?
I just, I just summed everything up. If you wanted to ask questions, I don't want to go to.
You were right to the end. You didn't go through it then.
Do you want me to go through?
No, no, I was just saying, I'm looking to see where are we here? No, I don't want to go by word by word, but I have some questions as well. I'll use it as a share if you want to go first, Phil. I, I mean, I have stuff on different pages in the circle.
No, I think we're, we're really, uh, going in the right direction. I, I noticed this, number three, Cory checks, pre-employment physicals, and drug testing agreement forms.
Right.
I'm not sure, and I was pleasantly surprised that the county does this. Especially, uh, where we, we have a lion's share, a good group, you know, maintenance department in and about all the courthouses. I think there's something pretty basic about passing the drug tests or being physically fit within reason. And, and, and certainly a Cory check. And I know that in Cory is a very sensitive area in the confidentiality involved, et cetera, et cetera. But we are around, and it have an environment where we're around courthouses and, and, and people that have sensitive information on file and certainly a great custodian staff. Are an intricate part of our courthouse. I mean, I think one or two of our courthouses have custodians that have been there in excess of 20 years in the same courthouse. I mean, there's probably too far more work at a 20-year employee in a courthouse than, than, than their, their job scale calls for. I mean, public relations work, uh, talking to people, et cetera. So it's so important. I was not, uh, we, does everyone, does everyone, everyone take a Cory check and a pre-employment physical? Whether you're a custodian or.
For all new hires.
Or you, or a department yet, or.
We run them for all new hires now.
Okay, so now it is one part, one program. And there's no reason that no one should go.
No, it's in, covered in our handbook. It's covered in our contracts. It's covered everywhere, so I, I don't.
I'm a fan of it and I don't see it as a negative thing either, as long as you tell people ahead of time. But the confidentiality of particularly the Cory, uh, i- is very important.
Um, it's actually outlined in the offer letter that goes to the employee and the office contingent on passing.
Okay. Um, can we do check? References.
Yes, we do. We do references on every person that comes in.
Okay, I don't have any other questions this time. I, I do want to take this into consideration, but, uh, I think it's, uh, well, proposed. Just a preference. We've always, we've always, I think we've always been strong in personnel, but it doesn't, we're getting stronger and that's a good thing. And, uh, lately, lately, we've had some personnel issues. We, we certainly have, we've just hired four people in the custodial or in the maintenance department.
Hired three, yep.
The school, I mean, this is.
I ensure Cory as well. And thanks for, it's already applied, which is good. The other thing I just want to touch on really quick, exit interviews. So we don't currently do that.
Correct.
But we don't do that, but we're looking to do that moving forward when, starting in the new year?
In FY '23.
'23.
We will develop a policy.
I think that's a real good thing too. Uh, exit interviews get you information. You get feedback. You can't get enough in terms of feedback. And they'll pro or con, it's always a good thing. So I, I certainly support that idea. Uh, the other thing had to do with, um, that's just kind of like the, you know, pay scales, sick leave, anything like that with employees, that helps the employee. You know, let them know where they stand in terms of, it looks like we're on track. You're agreeing with that.
You brought up a good point we got in the pay scales because with this updated portal, uh, the budget will be in the portal and the pay scales will automatically calculate whatever percentage we put into the salary schedule. That, that will calculate for the COLA as well as the step increase. Right now, that's all done manually.
I see. Okay.
So that's going to be a big chunk off my, off my test.
No, I think that's good.
Big smile.
I'm glad, I'm glad. I know, I don't know if it's appropriate at this time or at this juncture, but I thought I saw, maybe jumped over his report, so I don't want to cross over. But I want to, he, uh, it joined, I mean, I don't want to say his, in, in our administrative report talked about, um, getting some additional personnel. And I, they noticed a few things. I was trying to figure out the rationale here, with all due respect, in terms of your department. I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about it now or later, but I was, this looks like this is going to be some labor-intensive work to get up and running. But on the other hand, to be fair and honest and candid, once it's up and running, it seems like it's going to be less manual. It'll be, it'll be better for you and better for us as a county. So I was trying to figure out, you know, you jumped at me about a justification for enlarging your department and also inside the Commissioner's Office. There were two staff increases.
I don't think, I think it will lessen, um, some of my work, but doing the pay scales is just one piece that I do and it's, it's not something that takes a long time to do. Um, ongoing is the benefit paperwork. It is very, uh, labor-intensive and that's not going to change. Everything is manually filled out. It has to be sent to Mayflower. Um, changes happen every week. I mean, the benefits alone is, could be a full-time position, just benefits, not including anything else that, that I touch, so, um.
There's another area too that the Abraham's Group didn't spend an awful lot of time on, but I've observed too is the Norfolk County HR department should be a repository or a place to begin for employee training of all different types. Uh, when I first got here, I started asking questions about OSHA training, for example. Now, the county is not the whole no OSHA. Many state organizations and locals are not yet. It's a great place to receive training for on-the-job safety, how you perform your work. Our friends in facility maintenance would be great recipients of that, but again, it involves labor, involves planning, execution. Um, that's just one example, but there are many areas, um, in the training room that our HR area just doesn't touch right now. We have to get there.
Okay, now just count respectfully, uh, that again, in some towns, in some communities, you have an HR person and then they have a part-time person or an assistant to help them out in those kind of regards as well, which I would endorse, you know? I'm just, I was trying to put it all together last night and today, just looking at these requests. And I saw two, and I, and I don't know if you're looking for one or two, moving forward for the budget, let me say. The chair has said, this is going to be something we're taking under advisement as a guy, so no, no action needed, but I wanted to hear from you, your reason. Thank you. I got that now. I appreciate that. That's good. Good to know. Thank you. No further questions on this, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins, come on up. Anything, anything else for Michelle right now?
Nice job.
Again, this is very.
Yeah, that's good.
Teresa St. and laid out, man, like even the chairman can understand it. That's good.
Thanks.
If you're not, I'll ask.
Thank you.
You're welcome. She has to sign it. She has.
Oh.
The blues, you have to sign it.
They're signed.
Are you signed?
Have you signed? Did she have to sign?
I did.
Oh, there you go. Good. Taking a blue, look at this guy. Taking a blue.
Next, we have Assistant County Director, Bill Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having me. I love sitting in the seat because it really catches my bald spot on the Zoom for a vast listening audience. I know, right? That's exactly back to the wall.
I know what you're talking about.
You'll learn that lesson.
Off to a great start.
Hickoff didn't do it. The one time he didn't do it, wild bill, that was it for him.
Uh, off to a great start. I have the honor of privilege of talking about, uh, our regional services initiatives. And I started, um, slightly tongue-in-cheekly with a quote from, uh, our good friend, Thomas O'Brien, the Treasurer of Plymouth County, which is, "The county government is the future." He said that to Director Cronin and I when we met in his office at the very beginning of Director Cronin's tenure. And I think it really does set the stage for the endeavor we're all, not only in the Quad County Initiative, but the endeavor we're all a part of here. And just to sort of set the table, I want to say I really enjoyed this, uh, act, activity. I really enjoyed this exercise working with Mark Abrahams. I agree wholeheartedly with his recommendations. And just to put this in a, a, a context of timeframe, while the ARPA endeavor was unfolding and while, uh, we were without a county director at the time, there were a lot of discussions that were happening amongst, uh, the different counties about what to do, how to go forward. And we were able to have a parallel discussion about what are you doing for regional services? How, what are your best practices? What type of programs do you have? So I think it really brought us together as a cohesive unit of still existing counties and really, uh, played a great foundation for us, uh, to move forward. So I'll move quickly through, through the first, uh, few parts of the presentation, which is really just a synopsis of wh- where we are. And so the regional service report bifurcated into two phrases, phases, and it asks us, uh, where are we now and where would we like to go? So the first phase was, uh, one that sought to collect a lot of data in the county. That, just to review, we know we provide engineering services, we provide, uh, RSVP volunteer coordination services. We provide bulk purchasing for things like dog tags for some of the town clerks offices. So we took stock of, of where we were a- as a governmental unit. Uh, and we asked, we surveyed stakeholders from all of the 28 cities and towns to create a benchmark of your satisfaction. And what we got back was, uh, that satisfaction is quite high. Uh, 82% of respondents rated county services as four or five. Uh, 79.4 of the respondents, uh, rated county services, uh, with a four or five, with over 91% responding with a three, four, or five. And just to pause there for a moment, I, I really want to underscore, and this was something that Director Cronin, as, as he entered, uh, county government, uh, put as a priority. This type of surveying of our customers will not be a one-off. It will be at the very least annual in nature, where we take the temperature of how we're. It will be, at the very least, annual in nature, where we take the temperature of how we're doing. But it will also be actuated across a number of smaller conversations, like the conversation Director Cronin and I had today. We went over to Dedham Town Hall with the monthly Norfolk County Managers Meeting, so that we're always looking for opportunities to gather data about county regional service performance, but also where to go from here. And that's really what the second half of the presentation is about. The second phase of the report sought to gather data from our town and city managers to create a roadmap on how to build our regional services portfolio going forward. We undertook this effort, again, with surveys and focus groups. We surveyed, we asked towns, what are you doing already together? Communities like Walpole, Norwood, and Sharon are doing things such as a, a, a shared regional energy service manager to look at their solar projects throughout three communities. Other communities are doing.
Sammy.
So they have a.
I didn't, I didn't know that.
So they have, well, each, it's, they're using the green communities grants.
Right.
Money to look at each town building in those communities, see if they're possible, look where they could reduce their fleets of buses, for example, if they have some smaller student services buses to transfer for them into hybrid buses and things like that.
Energy, energy audit.
Energy audit, but it's, but so the person is working not just for a single community, but they're working as a consortium of communities. There are other things like shared veteran services for a few communities, shared veteran services, dog services, animal control services, and the like. So we tried to benchmark them and we found also water, shared dispatch as well, which was something that the county looked at years ago, and IT. So from that benchmark, we then moved on and we had our first focus group with the town of Medway, obviously. Mike Boyden, who's an advisory board member, Foxborough, Bill Keegan, who is a, the former town manager here in Dedham. And Noah Town Manager, Tony Bazuko, with Mark Abrahams and myself, to ask, what type of services as we move forward would you like? And what they said back to us is that the county needs to strategically think more regionally and serve as a resource to cities and towns to help formulate multi-town collaborative efforts. So member communities are not all going about governing their own concerns on their own. So some of this work is being undertaken by the communities themselves, but what the managers came back to us to say was use, we should be using Norfolk County as a resource to bring these stakeholders together. And that was their, that was their recommendation. They also said, we really want you to adjudicate the programs you provide against a rubric of value. We, they, they're not looking for feel-good programs, they're not, they're looking for ones that fill specific demonstrative needs within each community, like the engineering department, which is a big hit and is tremendously popular. So the Abrahams group recommendations, they had five recommendations, I'm going to take them in turn. The first three recommendations near our rural services. The first was to continue providing regional services, which we will always do, we will obviously do. Second, they suggested we develop a brochure to describe and market our county regional services. So we looked at an example in Bartlesville County, they have a great online county report that is sort of a digital brochure that you can actually flip through, and they had a very good presence that talked about not only all the regional services that they have, but the regional entities. So in Norfolk County would be things like Dove, which we work closely with, that are sort of partnered and allied with the county. And this really dovetails well with the program we're doing to revamp our website. And our new Twenty-First Century website will be a great home for us to highlight our increased regional services footprint. And again, as I just said, the third Abraham's group suggestion was to expand county engineering services. We see here today. Canton's looking for services, a few weeks ago, they went out to Dover to help do some survey work in a town cemetery. And again, the commission itself has already identified this need and acted towards it. You increased the positions over at the engineering department, so you're already beginning to address the increased desire from constituent communities for engineering services.
We expect the appointment for that expansion to be forthcoming within the.
Great, great. So we're moving right along there. So, so what will regional services look like in the future? The Abraham's Group's given us a really robust accounting of where we stand. And it's sort of exciting as we go forward, and I think the greatest thing that's ever happened to regional services in Norfolk County is the ARPA program. It has created a situation in Norfolk County where daily municipal stakeholders, town managers, town finance directors are calling county government and working collaboratively with us. Director Cronin, every day is on the phone with someone from one of the twenty-eight cities and towns, troubleshooting a question, thinking about problems together. I was on the phone with the Canton, the Canton Finance Director two days ago, and we had a really robust conversation. We were literally walking back home from Dedham Town Hall today and spoke with their finance director.
He's actually very good. He, he opens doors to thinking, he's, he's very creative.
Who was that with the Canton?
Yeah. He was, he was, it was a good, it was a good, good hour of conversation, well spent.
Yeah, he is, no, he's good.
But I think this level of, and speaking to some predecessors of my position, this level of collaboration is something we've never seen before and it really allows us.
Or the spotlight. Yeah, it's good. It's a good thing. I mean, you.
I think ARPA is bringing one of those.
I agree, I can't agree more. I mean, for, without ARPA, you think about it, you go to town halls now and they're all saying, how do we get the money? How soon can we get the money? Who do we contact? And it's putting a good spin on county government and the rest of your report does other things, too.
Yep. So I, I think that, that's quite, that's quite good. And as we, as we look at what other areas we can expand into the Abrahams Group, their focus group that we undertook with the managers, so an interesting thing came out of that, and that was they're not necessarily looking for us to take on whole services, let's say, to take, take a bite and do animal control across all twenty-eight cities and towns. But one of the things that came up was perhaps the county could help in, through service contracts, backfill and backstop positions much like, for example, an electrical inspector. Let's say an electrical inspector slips and falls and is out for six weeks. It's very hard for Norwood to find that person. But the managers did say that there would be an appetite amongst all of them to perhaps enter into an intermunicipal agreement so that five or six or ten communities will, will say, we will internally, the county will create a service contract that would allow for them to hire someone to cover people's vacation, cover people's illnesses, cover people's absences, so that the inspectional services portion of the town's government doesn't grind to a halt for a week because somebody goes, goes away. And that will allow towns to continue that flow of services that is short money that there's an appetite for. And that will also increase our profile. Perhaps fifteen years down the road, that service could be completely done through intermunicipal agreements and through the county, through the county, but it really begins us dipping our toe in a wider way. And when we talk about these type of service contracts, we tried something very, very simple a couple of weeks ago. This commission instructed Patrick to go out for wetland delineation services. So we, we sent it out to the managers. We're going out for wetland delineation services. Would there be an appetite for communities to have a county negotiated contract that you could utilize for wetland delineation services amongst five or ten or twenty towns? There wasn't a lot of need there, and that's okay, too. These, these new efforts have to be at their core iterative in nature and flexible. And we very possibly will not be building large regional services, brick and mortar facilities. But what we will be doing is having programs that like flowers bloom and grow and then fade when their need is fulfilled or community needs shift. So I think that's, that's a key hallmark of what regional service will be in the future. The, so that was number four. And finally, the fifth Abraham's recommendation is consider developing the capacity to provide regional services through contracted services similar to the recent Avon memorandum, which is exactly that service contract model that we're continuing to explore. And again, that the ideas for where those will come will come from conversations. We're looking at myself and Director Cronin, principally me, having check-ins with managers on a quarterly basis, continuing to go to their regional meetings to really feel out where value-driven programs can arise from. And we have yourselves as well, who, you especially, and you have deep ties to communities in the, in the, in the center of the county. And you're telling us what, what you're hearing from them and what those needs are. Chairman Shea in the eastern part of the county has deep ties and can bring that information as well. So I think this, this process is a, is a expanding one and a fluid one, but one which can at its core, continue to deliver value-based services to the towns. And we shouldn't be afraid to have something that's ever-changing, but ever-increasing in the value that we give to the constituent cities and towns. That is the synopsis of what, what I have. The only other thing I would say is looking at our recent success with the BJA grants as well as working with the burn grants, grant writing may be something where we want to be everyone on the lookout for, especially because our branch of government is quite different countrywide. There may be federal grants out there that are county-based, that perhaps we could leverage and bring home, much like the burn grant we did, much like the BJA grant, although we hope it will be a little more streamlined in getting the money from the feds. I think there's opportunity there as well to continue to bring value.
Built to that final point, I would expect in a few years after people step back and you look at the successful deployment of hundreds of millions of dollars of federal grant money for ARPA, the county's going to be featured as, as they work with CARES in some cases. Excellent tools for the disbursement funds. This was kind of new ground for county government, and I think this is proof of concept. So I wouldn't be a bit surprised in a few years if we see more, to your point, federal money coming directly to the counties and saying, you folks do this, we know you can.
That's right.
Hasn't been there before.
No, no.
Right. With that happening, answering your questions.
You may have, Commissioner Collins?
Great job.
I have a question or two. If, if, I love this stuff, I love talking about it, I know that we're we're on the lower end, but we can definitely improve in my time here. In addition to the Abrams report, in my working with managers, assistant managers, selectmen, I do sense other than the engineering department, most people don't think the county does a whole lot for the cities and towns. I mean, the history of the county is shrinking in this part of the country, but it's, it's at a, I think it's reached its lowest part and now it's going to rebound up. You mentioned dog services. At one time, it was the county dog office.
Yeah.
And if you looked at the, if you looked at the great, the general laws, you'd see the county dog office had empowered all, all over every city and town. And, you know, the bigger cities have a dog office, the bigger towns, the small ones probably don't anymore, or it's a shared position. We tried some of this four or five years ago for a local dog pound, perhaps we weren't as equipped then to do it as we are now. But I think what is going to put this, pull this together, in addition to the creative thoughts that you have here, the Abrams report and talking to managers is the influx of federal money, or it does? How you run the tool is yet to be determined, but I cannot imagine that there can't be some way. The idea of plumbing or an electrical inspector for the small, for all the communities, but I would say the small ones probably only have one or one and a half. And if one's sick and one isn't there, it's a problem. You say we could share it, but if we, I'll tell you, they'd really be interested if we could pay for it, have a person through ARPA that works for us, but he's on loan to one section, I don't expect a person to whine at the service, Bellingham, et cetera, et cetera, but the regionalization is unlimited potential. But I would think we're really sweeten the block to the towns if we could, we could, you know, share up or pull off some of this money for regional purposes. Now, the history of RSVP and other things, they've been you know, originally you got it on a grant and then it becomes a permanent program, so, you know, I, I, I think the time has come to meld all this together. How it gets done is still a question, but I think we're more than open and more than fair to lay all this on the table, and it's definitely, definitely needed.
Well, three, Mr. Jones, I think that's correct. And one of the things, when we talk about thinking in a different way, regional services does not necessarily translate into FTEs, it's not necessarily translated to a county employee. And I think what we've seen, you know, we all go to MMA and listen to the presentations where they, they've talked for decades about the need to regionalize and work together. And so I think with, in areas where there's an absence of leadership at the county level, communities like, I was just explaining, Walpole, Norwood, Sharon, get together and say, hey, we want to do something around clean energy and, and green budgeting and, and green services for the community, so let's all get together and do it ourselves. Now, ARPA has put us quite literally in the room, so that I think.
That's a good way to describe.
And I think managers now, just in the two and a half years I've been here, are beginning to say, well, maybe the county could help us with that. Maybe, maybe they could do something. So I think we're, we're part of the toolbox now. And so as, as communities look at regional, many of them have done some sort of regional programming. Now, we may be a part of the mix, perhaps it's working with our contacts at RSVP and trying to leverage a federal grant to help Milton, Canton, Randolph's senior centers. Perhaps, perhaps there's something that we can find an outreach worker and, and write the grant for them. And again, generate demonstrable value. So I think that's, that's where, where this is going. Could there be the case that after a program was a contract for a long time, that, that program might be completely sussened by us? Perhaps, and I think other counties have done things like, with this county as well, the Public Health Nurse Program that Randolph, Holbrook and Avon were able to participate in, that was a grant written by us, but again, it didn't. We found the money at the federal level, but we didn't own the healthcare and benefits for this person, but that person was generating a benefit to those three communities. So I, I think that's the direction we're going in. I think it's exciting and I think this, it's going to be, in, it's going to be a, a long process. It's not, we're not just going to have next year come to you with a portfolio of twelve programs that we're running concurrently. I think it's something we're going to build over time, but that is going to grow, and especially as we, to your point, successfully deliver ARPA.
I don't think we're showing our twelve programs either, but if we go to one more and then one more after that, but if we can't do it in under ARPA in the next five years, it's never going to happen. I think everything, whether, whether, whether the, the set, whether the stars are all aligning here, and that might be wishful thinking, but I will tell you one other example that is analogy. We all know about the terrible gas explosion in the town of Lawrence and then over in Altheanor. Do you know that after they settled with Colonial Gas and after they said, you guys are going to pay, I'm going to put everything back? In the putting everything back, they had so many inspections that they had building, they had gas inspectors. My whole, for a fact, the city of Quincy was sending a premium, premium top gas inspector, that was three in Quincy. To, he, he spent half of a year, most of nine months in the town, in the city of Lawrence doing inspections. Now, that was recoverable because Colonial got whacked pretty good, and I, whether the town ever gets reimbursed, the city of Quincy ever gets reimbursed, I don't know. But in fact, it slowed down a little what was happening down here, but no one wanted to bring it up because they want to help Lawrence and not Altheanor, but the lion's share of the inspections were in the city of Lawrence. I mean, they had thousands.
Oh, yeah, I recall.
And did mutual, mutual aid, if you will, use the large, fire term for it, was, was just terrific. But God forbid, there should be something like that. If we had one of these programs already set and a roving person or two and, you know, something were to happen in Bellingham, Medway, and, you know. There'd be, there'd be a facility for they could call up and, can we help you? Yeah, sure, we can help.
So I, I.
Those kinds of things, it's limitless.
Right, so we're, you know, I know at the time of the show, we have a lot more to go here, too. Good report.
I can talk about this all day.
No, no, I know you can, but no, good report. I really enjoyed reading it, I really did. Two quick questions, and these are easy, you can get back to me later, but you mentioned about marketing with the brochure. So who we, who's our target audience? Municipalities?
Yes.
I'm guessing, right? So think about this, in terms of your interactions, John and you are already interacting with finance directors and administrators. We are interacting with towns because of ARPA. That's the key, we got to keep that going.
Absolutely.
I mean, I can tell you just personally and quickly, in the town of Canton, when we had the assistant to our veteran department, right, with Dale, it was a home run. He did a great job. And Canton was so pleased with his work, they couldn't say enough about that. That opened their eyes to the county, it really did. And now I'm not surprised they're coming with engineering. So, you know, it takes it like a little one-on-one in all the towns, but we have so many other towns that may say, as the chair said, what's county government doing for me?
Right.
So we need to make sure we're marketing those towns as well. Get out there and advocate what we're doing, what can we do? And the chair suggested numerous things here. I mean, maybe what I would do is take a list of these
Oh, yeah.
and look at them as goals. Like, I like the idea of having a backup inspector shared regionally. How many times, you know, I know in my own town, they're looking for somebody, they fell down, they broke their leg, now they're looking for somebody. So having a backup is always a good thing, you know? And as the chair said, maybe even looked at, I thought when I first got on the board, I thought there was discussion about looking at a dog, an animal rescue shelter countywide. I thought that came up because we talked about the dog tags and this is before you were on, John.
Right.
Discussion that we're going to look at, maybe doing something.
Yeah, it's tough business. I got some experience with it and with respect to the time, uh, one of the challenges you have with animal control officers is if we had a county one, there would be, there wouldn't be enough hours in a day for the individual who's chasing all four corners of the county to retrieve animals, store animals, kennel them and care for any injured.
No, people can be more of a regional county.
Right.
Like maybe for four towns or
Right, and then you get involved with assets, physical facility assets of kenneling. Uh, the public health needs to go associate associated with the end vehicle. So it's beyond, as Bill said, it's beyond the the elements of hiring. Now you're in the property owned business. And I've seen that in my personal experience, it's such a challenge. A lot of communities don't want those expenses because they can skyrocket quickly.
Sure. All I'm saying, and I'm not saying advocating either way, I'm just saying the thought, based on our conversations in your report, maybe make a list of some things that we could look at moving ahead for the year, you know, looking to to expand. We already do engineering, we know that.
Yeah.
And we do veteran services and we do the dog tags, that's great. What else can we do? What could be a goal for next year? Maybe like you said, tackle, uh, maybe look into the idea of collaboration for an inspector or for something else, you know, make that a
I think public health is very big.
Huge.
Yeah.
We huge.
And to that point, we did in Michael's later days, when we got that B J A grant, we looked at utilizing some of it for a public health nurse review. And you just could not find a public health nurse in the in the dark days of the pandemic. You we we worked with the red town manager who was, who has a public health background himself. He's like, if you find someone, good luck to you because I can barely keep the people I have currently in each community sort of hired one.
Well, we had that, uh, nurse came in and talked about
That's right.
Yeah. You know, and I can follow up on that. Maybe, I mean, Boncible has a public health program, you know, they do, but they have a county nurse.
They do.
Right, I'm not, again, am I suggesting we do that?
No.
I don't know, but it's something to look at.
Right.
I mean, these are tough times for nursing industry and everybody else, maybe it's something we can look at.
And something we might be able to leverage additional federal dollars.
Yes.
But and to your point about communication, I think it's also, we're we're now on Twitter, which is very exciting. But this, we we when say Milton comes in, we're very, we're very quick to tag the Milton Town manager and the town of Milton's Twitter, so that
What's that Twitter account?
Uh, Norfolk County M A.
Oh, okay, all right.
Um, I'll I'll, I will send it to you.
Okay.
But I think it 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 just, we're we're looking for touches, right? It's like everything, additional ways to relevantly tag ourselves and kind of collaborate. It it's not no longer press clippings, it's more a digital footprint. But you're right.
Yeah, good job.
You know, it's pretty neat is, uh, I appreciate everything you did. You gave a nice presentation. Because we're working so closely with the other counties and the other counties don't do the exact same tasks that we do. It's kind of neat that in your conversations with the other counties, you're bouncing ideas off them, they're bouncing ideas off you. What works for them, what doesn't work for them, you know, the same thing back, I must to them. So I, as long as you can keep that collaboration going, I think that's going to be a very positive development.
Well, it might be the right time to, I was going to drop this in my my report, but to your point, Commissioners Collins, we, uh, through Chairman Shay, have an interest in having another quad county meeting of county commissioners. Um, it was, it's likely to happen after the new year, but one of the things I was thinking of advancing to that potential agenda is a is a review with these other counties about our experience with the Abraham's group. I've gotten several calls from county commissioners and county treasurers about how did that, how did that report land? Uh, what did you learn? Because they haven't done this and they they are that's fact, right?
We know that.
So they they may be wanting to hear more about like, what did you, what did you guys do here? And what was the impact? What did you learn? And I think it would be a great opportunity for us to share that information in our next meeting with them as an agenda, right?
Messing along. You're quite right, I've never met a good idea I didn't want to steal. I mean, we we don't need to generate them all, we can appropriate them as well.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Is there anything else on this?
Thank you.
Just my reports.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
See you.
Two minutes.
Thank you, Bill. I will.
All right.
All right, you're in the hot seat, don't you?
Excellent. Happy to be here. Good afternoon. All right, the last component, uh, relative to the Abraham's group report and the feedback thereof, pros and cons is related to the administrative components. Um, briefly, as my reports even indicates, um, the Abraham's report in summary delivered three different tranches of their report to us, uh, representing best practices, best practices, reviews, financial management and operation analysis of county government. From an administrative perspective, um, these fell into multiple areas, including multi-year financial forecasting, financial management, best practices, and establishing of financial procedures, operations and staffing analysis, capital planning processes, procedures, and finally, as Bill mentioned, regional services. Overall, the Abraham's group provided twenty-five recommendations against these administrative elements of purpose. Um, under the executive summary of the Abraham's report, there were six recommendations. Um, the first was to be mindful that the county to date has had fourteen recurring management letter comments in its annual audits. Um, the Abraham's group recognizes that, um, a lot of those management letters, uh, comments were, um, related to a a system of government here in Norfolk County that has been reformed and is being reformed. Um, so I will be monitoring those comments going forward to see how many of them fall off or, um, dissolve, starting sometime in F Y twenty-two, because that's when a lot of the, um, changes that you put in place um, were in effect. Manual processing came up over and over and over again. The county relies way too much on paper. Um, and I think they correctly pointed out, we have tools and we need to start using them. Um, you'll hear in my report, the words budget sense, eye visions and Tyler technologies. It's the same thing. It's a product that the county has purchased as a platform primarily to handle our own financial procedure, excuse me, our financial functions. It also has additional benefits, as Michelle just mentioned, for time and attendance of the human resource pieces. We need to start using them and we will, you'll see some of those improvements in the next fiscal year. Uh, budget transformation, this is an area actually I don't agree with. Uh, this is the only item in the Abrams report that I thought was, um, not really something I'll be placing as a top priority. I understand why he did this. Uh, I've worked in organizations that thought pursuing, um, the award of the best presented budget in America kind of thing was worthy of celebration. Um, that's not my training. My training is produce a budget that people understand, that they relate to, has a transparent interest and can be a referable document that people go back to and easily find out what do we pay for? That's all it needs to be. Um, searching for the approval of an outside group is not something I'll search for. So unless the commissioners tell me to, it's not something I feel overly invested in. I want to make sure every year that budget we build evolves, it changes and it fits your interests to deliver the budget components to our customers. Um, human resources transformation, as I said in my summary at the back of my report, this is an area that is my top priority for F Y twenty-three, and I think Abraham's group have recognized it as well. Um, the human resources department of Norfolk County is lucky to have Michelle Everdine, she's great at what she does. Um, she needs help. There are a lot of areas that we need to improve on. Uh, the record keeping was a big task in the first six months to centralize and coordinate the secure storage of all employee and past employee records. Going forward with respect to existing employee time and attendance modules, this is an area within the Tyler I Visions product that you voted for back in September that will now be available shortly, as soon as we deploy it to every county employee to review their time and attendance records online using their phone. It's a big job. People need to see what their balances are so that they can make choices on how much vacation I have left and so forth. The structural deficit, this was the last finding for the executive summary back on November tenth. Um, we presented, um, a PowerPoint to the trustees to try to examine in in closer detail the impact that the school's debt has had on their operations. I think there was a corresponding vote that came with it from the trustees that recognized something had to be looked at more closely and consequently, a tuition study, I believe, will be part of the plan going forward. This evening, the advisory board will consider that investment to have a closer look and make a recommendation for how to plan for improved revenue going forward. So those items, many of them are underway or thought of. The next area is expansive. I'll go through these quickly. What I tried to do to kind of help you kind of put your arms around this is the operating and capital budget sections, um, were very, very deep. Um, the big, the biggest thing that I recognized was for the first time Norfolk County now has a financial procedure manual. Great stuff. We help collaborate and add what is in there, how are we going to conduct our business? Similarly, on the capital side, we now have a capital budget. We hadn't had one before. We'll be able to now plan for multi-year capital plan and deliver to the commissioners every October a view of the next year financial, uh, picture for a capital plan. Those are great tasks, um, and they're underway. Some of the things that, um, they've wanted us to do, um, on thirteen plan, uh, the staffing assessment. Commissioner State, you mentioned a few minutes ago, we talked about two positions, was this the area that you were thinking of?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry if I conflated. One of the things that I wanted to call out was they asked to, um, and within the commissioner's office, look at two particular roles, um, because they have some kind of overlap and we'll be examining those in the next six months. There's opportunity there for us to evolve and find a space for, um, new opportunities for financial oversight and also support for H R. Um, we needed to adopt the policy to require any outstanding purchase orders to be rescinded. I'm going to couple that with the next several update twenty-seven-year-old trial court lease agreements. That is an item that's going to obviously involve our partners in the other counties. I've talked to them. Some of them say, yes, you're right, that twenty-seven-year-old agreement needs to be updated. Others say, leave it alone, because the minute you start asking the trial courts to look at something, it may not go in your favor. Um, it is an old document, but, um, I'll be sounding out the trial court in my contact over there to see how serious they are about updating that. What do we need to us before we actually get on the road of doing it? Um, adopt the policy that the annual operating budgets that are recommended to finance committee and advisory board be balanced. Of course, that will happen in twenty-three, four, and we're planning that now. Ensure the county director's budget be in compliance with budget guidelines and policies. Again, spring of twenty-two is planned. Fully utilize the I Visions budget manual. This will be incorporated into the F Y twenty-three budget development process using the service contract that you approved this afternoon. Hopefully, the advisory board will release this evening. Monitor budget activity on a monthly basis, we're doing that now. Um, I have been working with Phil Iantoska. He provides me a monthly analysis of our financial position. We meet, um, almost weekly as a financial team to go through that report as well as any other financial activities that are going on. I meet with Nancy, Phil and Bill Buckley to dive into those details. Um, we adopt a model, um, that incorporates goals, performance measures and links to financial outcomes. Again, that'll be part of our F Y twenty-four budget development after using the personal services contract input from F Y twenty-two. Um, some areas that have already been adopted, the forecasting tool, we're using it. The capital planning and budget process tool, we're using it. Specify a capital budget, that actually started in F Y twenty-two, you guys did that before I got here. Um, and establishing a capital budget threshold for upper operating capital spending differentiation already underway. So out of those thirteen, we're making headway on approximately five of them. Um, you know, and that's that's great progress within just a few months. The purchasing section had six recommendations. Again, a section that, um, probably could have been longer, um, in in, um, in terms of content, but, uh, an area that nevertheless needs some further review. Automate the purchase order system. We're going to plan to incorporate a new internal control policy starting in F Y twenty-three. In my experience as a, um, a financial manager for the state for thirty years, every state agency needs to have an internal control policy specific to your department. You can't take your department and copy it over here and call it the same. You have to take the roles and the responsibilities of each financial organization and identify what does Peter Collins do, what does Joe Shay do, what does Dick Stady do? And who do you talk to? Who is your relative connection in the internal control policy? This document is iterative, it changes every year, uh, because people's roles change. But you have to update and be cognizant of how you control your financial organization. So we're going to take this financial policy, the Abraham's group report drafted for us, bring it down to a homegrown level and draft an internal control plan for F Y twenty-three using the personal services contract, um, staff that, um, hopefully will retain shortly. Uh, it's critical. This is a piece that must be had in order for us to achieve a higher bond rating down the road. Um, correct blank purchase orders, that's already been addressed. Automate low bid tracking of vendors for each supply and good contract award. Close out unused blanket purchase orders. These are items that are all be part of our new internal control policy. How is that done? Who is responsible for doing it and what is the timeframe? It will all be detailed. Uh, hire a new staff person to oversee the accounts payable, warrant process to separate the purchase order creation and warrant preparation functions.
Hey, there was one.
That's one. I remember talking to Mark a lot about this, Dick, because one of the things that I'm I'm trained on is the proper segregation of duties. You can't have somebody who orders something also be responsible for signing off on receiving it. That's that's a closed loop and it and it opens up the opportunity for bad things to happen. You want a segregation, the purchase person who buys it, accounts receivable, if you will, or payable, has to be separate under internal control policies. We're right now slightly out of that realm. Uh, we utilize departments to act as or people who order things, but the purchase order is created here. Nancy Rockwell does that. Um, but then technically, the receipt of the goods or services are signed off on by the department and then our people prepare the warrant for the payment against the P O that they opened. I'm not completely satisfied with that loop. I don't like it. I'd like to see a break and I'd like to see a new person in the middle of this be more responsible for the accounts payable side. Leave the P O side open, we need somebody in the backend approving that payment. Um, it has to be a separate person by definition. Um, and Mark agrees with me, I'll hold hard than Mark Abraham's. Clear management letter findings that noted instances where funds were encumbered without evidence. Many of the policies and changes recommended by the Abraham's group have had an immediate impact. More will follow in F Y twenty-three as these policies take effect, the management letter comments will begin to dissolve. In summary, the Abraham's group provided a remarkable and detailed review of all our operations. As you know, it's over two hundred pages. It was a thorough, thorough review. The administrative recommendations are sound and they offer an excellent plan to move forward. In terms of priorities, I'd like to announce to you this afternoon, rather, number one, we do need to shore up support of our H R functions. It's a major risk area. Um, when the county commissioners and myself, you know, imagine areas where things can go wrong, human resources is an area of high risk for any organization, uh, for any number of reasons. We have one person doing this job right now. We have no redundancy built in and that's a major area of focus. So I'll be bringing forward some second suggestions and recommendations to fortify that area in F Y twenty-three. Number two, utilizing personal services contract, complete the F Y twenty-three budget development utilizing I Visions. Um, this particular, um, personal services contract will hopefully provide the staff at the departments and ultimately you, a clear understanding of how this new tool, I Visions, can be used to build budgets and extract information for the benefit of the county commissioners. Um, this is a new process we're going through this year. In the past, I understand departments would hand spreadsheets to the director and then the director would work with staff to input that directly into the budget sense process. We're skipping that, putting putting the departments right on the keyboard to say, put it into budget sense and then we'll roll it up and start balancing the budget from there. This service contract will help us achieve a seamless transition to that new process. Number three, reorganize the fiscal duties in F Y twenty-three to create separation of duties. I believe the internal control policy development and the examination of functions within the county commissioner's office for financial duties has to be reexamined. We need to have a reorganization to reflect a proper segregation of duties and an assignment of roles to qualified individuals to get the job done. So there will be some changes, but, um, I expect them to be very positive and productive to the end that we're trying to achieve. Finally, utilizing the personal services contract, complete and, uh, an internal control policy to take care of all the recommended financial procedures for operating and capital functions and assign them to staff in the document that lives and guides personnel on a financial task. Um, I remember years ago when I had to do my first internal control plan, I dreaded it. It was difficult, it takes a lot of time. Um, it's an investment of effort that ultimately though does pay dividends. People need to understand and embrace a control environment where every contract you process, every bill you pay. People need to understand and embrace a control environment where every contract you process, every bill you pay, every time you touch taxpayers' dollars has to be done with a full understanding of what you're doing. Minimize risk and you'll achieve greater outcomes. So that's what we're gaining towards and uh I want to thank Mark Abraham's, his group and uh obviously the commissioners for investing in this process. I think I mentioned early on, this is one of the reasons I took this job because there's nothing better than accepting a new position and having a game plan handed to you, say, run with it. With your help, um, I see great things ahead of me. So thank you.
Excellent.
Okay. Uh, we have any more questions, John? This is again another example of a lot of documents, a lot of stuff, as I like to say. Needs to be digested.
That was a fabulous presentation.
Right.
And you're doing a great job.
I'm encouraged by it. The proof is in the pudding here. We have to keep going to our goal. That's all I can say today.
Not to be redundant, just really quick, one question. So again, HR, it's your priority.
Yes.
Additional personnel.
Yes.
But in the purchases sections and it, it recommends hiring a new staff.
Mm-hmm.
So you're backing off that, you know?
No, no, I'm, I'm going to evaluate how that plays out. Uh, we have some opportunities coming up in FY twenty-three. We're gonna look at how that plays out. Is that additional staff or reorganization of um of roles and responsibilities?
So maybe something for the following year?
Uh, no, I do envision it to be FY twenty-three.
Okay, so polite question. Why didn't you list it in your summary? See, in your summary, you had priorities one, two, three, four, which I went to right away.
Yeah.
And I saw, that's what I said. I saw one, I saw two.
Right.
So is it one or two we're looking at?
Yeah.
Field viewpoint, what do you suggest?
It could be two.
Could be two.
It could be.
Okay.
I won't know that until we examine those rules.
Okay. Excellent job. And again, as Chief said, all inner advisement and part of the budget process.
Yes, sir.
As we go forward, we'll be evaluating.
Yes.
Next job.
Thank you.
Nice job. Really. Great job, John.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Number sixteen, report on American Rescue Plan for twenty twenty-one.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So very briefly, you do not have an item before you this afternoon. We've already discussed that, but I do want to explain something that um I've had extensive conversations with CLA about that is, is, it's kind of the process that we're in, right? Um, county government is way out in front handling ARPA funds for its end users. Um, the state this past week, I believe Governor Baker signed um the state distribution ARPA plan that the legislature had approved. So communities are now looking at um their distribution of funds as managed by the state. The state simultaneously is putting together its apparatus, its, its understanding of how the communities are going to interact with it to achieve um grants. That means the interim rule, which defines how you can use the grant, is now getting state attention. How can you use this money? One of the areas um early on that many of us talked about that is a purpose area of ARPA is called revenue replacement. Um, we are seeing uh a renewed focus by communities to use revenue replacement for a lot of different reasons. Um, recently, um it's come to my attention that some communities are talking, as they do, um with different firms about how that funding can be used. Let me explain. So if you're a community and you felt like um through um COVID, you lost a million dollars in the aggregate um in revenue. You go into the formula, the federal government has provided, and you, and you test it out, and yes, I qualify. You meet the test. So you put your application in for a million dollars. The question is, once you get your million dollars in reimbursement at ARPA funds from us or from the state, what do you do with a million dollars? Does that million dollars have to be used towards the purposes of ARPA? I.e. um, you know, high-touch cleaning areas, increased ventilation? Or can you use that revenue for purchasing police vehicles or renovating a building? Um, or things that are outside the purposes of ARPA? Um, the answer is unknown at this time. We're hearing some competing comments and this morning I've asked our partner at Clifton Larson to release a bulletin because this is, I think, the beginning of something that over the next couple of months, at least, we're gonna have to iron out because the federal rule doesn't give us clarity. But the state guidance, which is just released, is starting to suggest guidance. We don't abide to the state guidance, but our communities do. And so we want to be able to be able to say as counties, here's our rule. You have to like it or not, and here's the justification for it. We may not be in sync with the state, but at least let's have some thoughtful process about why certain judgments like this have been made. So it's just another area of complex kind of um management that we're gonna have to go through. And I'll be in contact, not just with CLA, but our fellow counties on how this is interpreted going forward.
Right, because if you're talking county response, then you have to look at all the counties that are using the money right now.
You would think that all four counties should, should have the same answer to that question.
Right, okay.
Yes, agreed. Yes.
That's, that's my point. You would think.
That's the goal.
That, that team.
Mm-hmm.
This probably falls more on the legal side than the accounting side, but they should work together.
I would agree.
Would have an answer about revenue replacement because they noticed, it's a big one from Dedham coming, right?
Uh, yes.
They've incorporated it.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, but it's behind it. Well.
Because revenue replacement is a big basket.
It, it, you know, Commissioner, you're absolutely right. I, I read an article last week, um it was a national news article that showed that there hasn't been a lot of activity at the local level to spend or get grants. That, not a surprise, but they did indicate that if the activity they're seeing nationally, revenue replacement is the most popular uh section of, of, of usage under ARPA by, I believe it's thirty-six percent of all applications of revenue replacement.
Hmm.
Cause I think financial people have worked it out. They say, this is the easiest way for me to recover funds and use them for multiple purposes. It becomes effectively a free cash option, right? That's how we would know.
It looks like a free cash.
Yeah, and I, I've heard both sides of it. Um, I've heard one side that says, no, you can't look at it as free cash. The government, the feds have clearly said, you can't use this for retirement benefits, OPEB benefits. They clearly said you can't do these things, but they're silent on whether or not you can use it for non-ARPA related things. That's the gray area we need to work out. So just a heads up in case you hear about it in your travels, we're working on it. And I had a conversation with Cohasset this morning and I, and I just informed Dawn that, you know, we're not here to be the land and out. We're here to, we're here to facilitate your needs and um we'll get them a right answer. Clearly, there's a lot of challenges ahead. This is definitely.
You know, and if the county position is to say no to revenue replacement, um, the, the way that you described it, um, maybe the state will say yes. That's fine. The cities and towns should know that. So if they're looking for revenue replacement, get that from the state and get the money from the county.
Right.
Right.
Right. Good point. I was thinking the same thing. It really was. I was gonna say, the, 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 the contingencies in a state, I can be saying this to federal. Federal ARPA clearly states, these are the purposes of the money.
Yeah.
Whereas the state has their own plan. So maybe that might be the way out, but anyway.
Could be.
I think you've given us some great ideas for when we meet with the counties though. Already, there's several things right there on the agenda to talk about with them.
All right.
That is all on that item, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we do have a three o'clock meeting, but uh I want to finish off here. I think we can. How about a report on COVID nineteen responses from the director?
Uh, two items. First, uh to alert the commissioners, we had um, uh, you know, a matter involving COVID cases uh for staff up at the Wollston Golf Course this week. Uh, we handled it according to our protocols. Uh, folks were alerted of close contact. We performed a high-touch cleaning and a fogging of the area. At this time, I think you understand that the course was closed effective December tenth, so it was not open to the public. But just to keep everybody aware, be responding to, and we do see COVID still in our midst and we are dealing with it on a daily basis. Nancy Rockwell would like me to inform you that she has filed the um CARES reimbursement request with A and F, the first of two. As the commissioners may know, CARES has come into an end at the end of this month. She has submitted a um reimbursement request of seventy thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, she will respond with the schools portion next week. So uh the county is a good place to recoup costs associated with CARES. I believe this is from, I think it's June of twenty-one to the present. So she's pretty much caught up. So that is all I have on CARES.
Quick question. When you talked about um COVID and the fogging and the golf course. So they're still doing that in the courthouses and all our county buildings once, once a week or so or something?
That's correct. Yeah, we have the tools. In fact, facilities went down to Wollston to do that. They have the tools.
So it's, as needed, it's not, it's not regimented like it was before?
No, I don't believe it is. They are using airport purifiers throughout as every space in the courts now have air purifiers.
Okay. Great. All right, so we can take a quick break before uh.
I have one other question.
Well, yeah, we're not, we're not done.
Okay.
Um.
Owen?
We're on a report of the county director. We're not done. What is the, what is the status of the web, the new website?
Is it gonna bring that up on my report, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, that's fine. I'll wait.
Report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, very briefly, as Mr. Buckley indicated, he and I attended the Norfolk County Town Manager's meeting today. It was held locally, so we were able to get in. It was great to see a lot of those folks. They gave a presentation on um public building processes and we took a chance to see the beautiful, very well-done restored Dedham Town Hall. Um, I also want to confirm, I believe I mentioned this last week, but at the risk of redundancy, I don't want to admit, I will be um submitting a request through the Attorney General's Office for opioid settlement. There's a class action suit um that the state has enjoined. I have been in contact with the AG's office. They reached out to me, actually, great service, uh wanting to know if the county was interested and I said, yes, we are. I did collaborate with Attorney Scott Lopez who reviewed it. He said it looks like a legit um option for this uh county to engage in. So I'll submit that and we'll see where that takes us. I really have no idea what the scope is and what type of reimbursement the county will be looking at. I'll report back as soon as I know.
Is that the one that really quick, we, we then we partner up with towns, they can apply to us for help as well? They can match it? No?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, but, but cities and towns in the county can apply for the same.
Okay, okay.
But they're, they're paramount.
Okay, great.
We're interested.
Great. I think so, right? Yeah, that's what we've come to be in. Um, the advisory board is being held this evening. I just want to note, Mr. Chairman, as I think you already did, that at five forty-five, the finance committee will meet briefly to update the advisory board that will commence at six o'clock.
I believe we're gonna be in attendance.
Right. My goal, my next item, my goal is by the end of this month, have the budget guidelines for FY twenty-three budget prep uh before you for consideration, so we can release those to our departments and get going on our FY twenty-three budget development. Also next week, I hope to have a draft storm policy before you to examine as we try to inform folks how to handle upcoming storm weather-related incidences in Norfolk County. Uh, and finally, Commissioner Shea Broach, we do plan to bring before you a demonstration of um the new county website. Um, there's been some progress with the vendor who has showed us a, a platform of what it will look like. Um, and we'll bring that before you next week so you can see a hint of the type of um electronic interface the county will have going forward for its customers. And uh it's nice. It's, it's, it's a very refreshed, updated look. Um, the final product may be a couple of months away still because we have to exchange contents, load, load information. But we'll try to have that either next week or the weekend, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other items that we need to discuss? Not necessarily on the agenda. Now is the time.
Mr. Chairman, are we moving to adjourn or just a, or go to recess?
No, no, we're, we're.
This isn't adjournment. The next meeting is solely at the county school trustees meeting.
That's one.
It's scheduled for three o'clock. We're gonna be right on time.
If you have no further business, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I move the adjourn at uh two forty-eight.
Sorry.
Motion made in second adjournal in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.